Good evening. Welcome to the Plimpton Board of Selectmen's meeting. This meeting is being recorded for cable cast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. Mr. Russo is not here tonight. I will be chairing the meeting. We're adjourned. Levity, you know.
Nice try.
You know, everything that Mark says every week, yada, yada, yada. And let's have a moment. But I do think it's nice to start this with a moment of silence to, you know, collect ourselves and maybe I'll settle down and just remember, you know, that we love this town and we love living here and we are neighbors and friends and we need to treat each other with respect. So it's just a few minutes or moments. Alrighty. So the agenda's been posted. Is there anything that needs to go on the agenda that is not on it? Okay, so starting at the top, we have a report from Christine on contacting Town Councilor regarding the Brook Retreat.
I had contacted Alana and we had a brief conversation about possible options, which I really don't want to get into at a public meeting, but she asked me to gather some information. Bree and I worked together to gather what she was looking for. She has it and we're asking her to make a recommendation on how to proceed. So that's all I've got to report on Brook Street, that we're working on it and hopefully within a week, maybe, maybe by next week, we'll have a response as to how she thinks we should proceed. So we have some, we have some good options, or I feel like we've got some good options. So hopefully I'll have more to repeat, to report next time.
Okay, and although marijuana is not on the agenda, I'll just say that I think we're in a holding pattern now, waiting for the legislature to do its thing and see if it will help us or how it's going to move along. So that's it on that. Okay, the end of report. Bree, do you have everything you need yet? Do you still have committees outstanding or?
No, I'm good.
You're good.
Yes. I didn't get to meet with Tara. She was a little busy and I was too, and then she was dropping off the ballot box to get fixed, which is very nice.
Yes.
Our ballot box will be fixed, so we are going to sit down this week.
Okay, and you were going to do a mock-up of the cover. Have you done that yet?
Yes, I've done that with.
Wow. So it's done. Do we get to see it?
Okay, I don't know how to send that to you though, because it's on the computer, how I did it. So I don't know.
What have you done?
The collage of the pictures. If I have to put that onto a disc, I don't know if it's going to send to you via email.
I would think it would.
Give it one thing, yeah. Send it to me. Let me see it tomorrow.
So you work on it.
I did the pixel thing for myself.
That's good.
It didn't come out very good.
Perfect. Okay, so the next thing we have is the personnel policy. Our response from Town Council. And even when I printed it up full-size, it's tiny.
Oh, my word. Well, actually mine came out small too. So he said, he really went to town on the personnel records.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, it made sense to me. It was all basically when people are wanting to look at their files, you know, 10 days, the town shall notify an employee within 10 days of the employer placing something in their, their record. Within five business days of such request, employees may review their personal files. So it just really kind of laid out what we had put as generalizations, more specific.
So we want to accept that as Council recommends?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we will do that. When we finish it all and then we'll just make a vote.
Perfect.
On the amendments that you will send to Dale.
Perfect.
Okay. So then the next one is what, the weather closure, which we've worked on many times. I think we already changed it per his recommendation, didn't we?
Well, I think that Mark really wanted to leave it like we had because it was more ambiguous with what he was recommending, I believe.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah. I remember that we talked about it, so we're leaving ours.
We'll leave ours.
Okay. It's like the next thing he talks about is disciplinary guidelines in action. Two different versions.
Yeah, so it looks like we've got two different versions. I mean, one is really wordy and then the second one is more concise.
And does he, he recommends the second one. Is that the wordy or the concise one?
That's the concise one.
I've got it printed out, so let's do that.
Okay. I liked that one too.
And I'm okay with adding that general statement that he suggests under the introduction.
Yeah, I thought that was good too.
The electronic communications policy. That was pretty long.
Yeah, that, I think he was recommending that we replace ours, right?
Yeah.
With this, the whole thing, because this is both electronic communications and computer usage.
Well, it seems a lot longer than what we, but more complete. I'm okay with using his recommendation.
Okay.
It's longer. All right, so that takes care of that.
Yeah, and then actually I think we pick up a second policy too, the computer usage, which we hadn't done yet.
Yep, that works out good. Okay, so I move that we, you're going to have to post that one, Dale, because that one will be different.
Is this the one he wanted? This is the one he's recommending?
Yes.
Okay.
To replace the other.
Do we have an electronic copy of this?
I can get it for you.
Can? That would be great, yeah. Okay, fine, and we'll put that one in.
Okay, so I make a recommendation that, or a motion that we accept the changes as we discuss tonight, and you will make sure that Dale has the.
I have the updated version.
Yep, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Chairman?
Sure.
On the personnel policy, I was thinking that, I think what you ought to consider doing, the board should consider incorporating the Waging Personnel Bylaw into the Personnel Policy Manual, because a lot of what's in there covers what we're trying to do in that book, so, in terms of holidays, in terms of vacation time and all of that sort of stuff. Rather than making individual policies, which would kind of fly in the face of that, it just to be, just be a simple inclusion of the Personnel Policy into the Personnel, I mean, the Waging Personnel Bylaw into the Personnel Policy Manual.
That makes sense to me. How about if I just reach out to Waging Personnel and just make sure that they don't have an issue with it?
Yeah, and I mean, you may want to wait for a full board for that. It was just a recommendation.
And also, aren't they going to be working on that?
They are working on getting job descriptions for all employees, and if, if it's an old job description, they're going to get updated job descriptions. We're going to be working, I think Barbara and I are going to work on the, the individuals that have contracts to separate the job description out of the contract. Some of them are MGL, so it'll be pretty easy, like Barbara. She said hers is just a general law, and I think Colleen's is probably the same. So she said that she would help me work on that, but Waging Personnel is going to be contacting all the department heads to, to get job descriptions.
Okay, and speaking of Colleen's, her contract is up this year. So I am going to put it on the parking lot.
Okay.
Which I've included in the agenda, because I never remember where the piece of paper is.
Okay.
That's not, you know, imminent, so we have time.
What is it, June 30th expires?
The agreement, the initial agreement was the sixth day of August.
Oh, okay, so it's, we do have time then.
We really do have plenty of time.
Okay, alrighty.
Okay, solar. Okay, Borrego, as you know from the emails, has gotten back to us with a couple of options. I countered today. He came back with, I countered and asked him for some clarification, and he came back with this chart, which is about as clear as mud to me. So I'm going to ask him.
Me too.
Ask him for some more clarity or see if there's somebody here that can.
Decipher it?
Decipher it. Did you look at this?
Yeah, I did. I did briefly, and, and that seems to be just sort of one scenario. You could plug your other numbers for it if you wanted to, but.
Is that something that you would know how to play with? Because it really is kind of.
I didn't really have a chance to play with it, but yeah, I probably could play with it a little bit. I think the bottom line here is you're looking at whether you want the, whether you want to do the fixed rate or the, or the indexed rate, and, and he makes his arguments both ways on that.
Yeah.
But I guess their offer was 25% indexed, and, I mean, I really don't know. Who knows what's going to happen to electric rates in the next 20 years? They've been going up for the last 20, but there's a whole lot of stuff going on in the background that could indicate that maybe they might go down, I mean, at some point in the future.
Twenty years is a long time.
Yeah, it is a long time.
So, and indexed, at least you're guaranteed that you're going to be 25% lower than whatever the rate is out there at the time. So, again, it's a board decision, not mine. I'm not sure how I would make it, but I would tend to lean in, in favor of that indexed rate rather than, rather than the fixed.
Really?
Well, you know, the, because the fixed, they had put an escalator in.
Yes, and I countered with a no escalator.
And, right.
And he hasn't responded to that.
And I haven't seen any, I, I think you're going to be finding it difficult to get a no escalator in there. I think they're, you know, because they don't want to pin themselves down for 20 years to a certain, to an absolute rate anyway, so.
Right.
But I could play with that a little bit and find out, but I think I would ask him back. They may or may not give you a non-indexed rate, I mean, a non-escalator rate, I'm not sure.
Yeah, because the escalator is 2% a year, and that's, that would end up being quite high, so.
Could very well be at the, at the end of that, right? And again, it would all depend on how the agreement was written, as to whether the escalator actually stayed in effect, or whether because of the, it was based on the current rates, which again gets back to the indexed rate, you know, whether that would be the better thing or not.
Okay, so maybe you could think of some questions that we may need to ask him.
I'll forward, I'll forward a couple alone.
And, you know, include us in the emails, and, so basically, solar is still a discussion.
When is he coming in?
We do not have him coming in yet.
Okay, no appointment yet? Okay.
No, he sent out a schedule that he thought would be good.
What is that, the Thursday thing?
By his schedule, we would have come to a term of agreement by last week, so.
Okay.
Obviously, we're not on his schedule. We're on our schedule.
Okay.
So, okay. Do you have anything you'd like to discuss about the board's goals, priorities, that task sheet or anything?
No, no, it, I mean, all that, that we're really working on is with the Collins Group to, to gather information for the forecast, which we're going to be reviewing, what they've come up with as a group on May, April 2nd? Was it, no, May 2nd.
It was May 2nd.
May 2nd. So we're going to look at the forecast that they've come up with, working with Barbara, and then we're also going to look at some financial policies.
Okay. That was May 2nd at 5:30. Okay, we'll put that on the schedule. And so, excuse me, do you want to talk about the comparable communities?
Sure. They're looking for us with the, the policies to come up with two towns that are abutting us, that are in the close proximity that they'd like for us to, or for them to look at, as well as three towns that are in a different area that are the same size. So we're all over the place with, because it's a pretty good-sized community, and everybody has, for the most part, given their, their thoughts on this. So it looks like basically the, the main theme is Halifax. Everybody agreed on Halifax. John Traynor suggested, and Barbara Gomez as well, and now Deb Stewart, that we see if they can do Kingston, Halifax, Pembroke, and Carver. They had originally said two towns. I can certainly ask them if they'll do all four towns, because it was basically a combination of the four towns that, that everybody had come up with.
Right.
So, you know, I'll ask them, I'll see.
Yeah, I mean, it's difficult finding comparable towns close to Plimpton, because we're far more compared to towns in other places rather than anywhere in Plymouth County.
They wanted proximal towns and then towns elsewhere in the state, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and of those four, if we needed to leave one out, I would leave out Pembroke.
Yeah, I would too. Okay.
We're tied with the other ones in some form or another, so.
Okay, so I'll ask if they can do all three of those towns. If they can't do all three, you want to just go with Kingston, Halifax? It's Kingston, Halifax, and Carver.
Yes, our only real tie right now with Carver is the cable. Although, you know, hopefully if we do any kind of regionalization, we include them, but if, yeah, if we can.
Okay, if they only do two?
It's, it's, because we're tied to them in the schools.
Okay, all right, perfect. So I'll let Monica know, they'll start working on that.
And what about the communities?
Oh, the three little communities. I don't think I brought in the email from these guys. They were, oh, you got it? Oh, you're so good. Okay, Berlin, Brookfield, and Millville. Never even heard of Millville.
Yes, well.
So, yeah, those were the three that were our size, so. And then John had liked, what was it?
Westisbury.
Westisbury. And then Deb said Northborough.
Northborough.
Got some awards for, for their policy document. So I'll talk to them about those as well.
And you said, you suggested Rochester.
I suggested Rochester. I thought it was more similar to us than, than Kingston, but, you know, it's.
I would agree. I mean, I live near Millville, so I, I know that.
Where is Millville?
Near Blackstone, Mendon, it's on the Rhode Island border, northern Rhode Island border. But, but it's, it's certainly not a direct comparison to Plimpton in almost any way. Rochester, I think, is a pretty good pick.
Brookfield is pretty good too.
Brookfield is, Brookfield is good, yeah. Brookfield would be good. What was the other one that you had then?
Uh, what was it?
Berlin.
Berlin, yeah.
Berlin is a good, is a good, is a good cross too. It's a rural community, you know, not super affluent, but, you know, fairly well-to-do, and it's a good cross, no town water, no town sewer, you know, that kind of thing. I mean, we all, yeah. That would be, I think that would be a good pick. Millville, I don't think's a good pick. For a lot of reasons, I just don't think that's a good pick.
Okay, Rochester, I think.
It's a different demographic entirely.
A little bit higher population than we do, but maybe I'll suggest Rochester as a size for them to look at. And then I think the one that John recommended too was pretty close in size.
Westisbury.
It's a seasonal, seasonable community.
Yeah, and it's an island community.
Might kind of throw things off.
But he think, he said they had a really good financial report.
Mm-hmm.
And it might just be worth us looking at it.
When you have a huge amount of seasonal money coming in, it's easy to have a really good financial report.
True.
So, okay, so you will follow up on that?
Yep, I'll follow up with that.
Okay. Oh, we need to close the town meeting warrants.
Okay, so that's all we've got? Okay.
All right, do you have anything?
They are as I, well, no, well, they are as I was. I sent you the email today. I don't know if you got it with, with the.
The seven that came in.
With the seven articles, this is the hard copy, on the seven articles that have come in, the seven petition articles that have come in. There are total of now 10 citizen petition articles.
Did you get those taken out? I already printed them out. Okay, you're sorry.
There's a total of 10. There are two more that came in today that haven't been certified, that I haven't seen yet.
Those I don't have yet.
And then there was one that was on earlier. That was the non-binding sort of referendum question. And beyond that, all of the articles are pretty much the same. Nothing new has come in since, since we talked last week. But there are 40, 41 articles on the end. We'll tell them anymore.
So just for general information, we did receive 10 citizen petitions to put warrant articles on the warrant, and we will do so. What about this?
Absolutely.
Madam Chairman, does that make these two uncertified ones, or?
Yeah, it does. That's the, that's the seven that have been certified.
I'm getting them all in check.
Well, she's got you fancy, huh?
Awesome.
I just chatted with Rick.
Okay, so do you want to make a motion? So I move that we, excuse me, close the warrant for the 2016 town meeting.
So are we closing both the special and the annual?
You don't have to, but, I mean, you can close, certainly the annual you would close, but, because this is the date that the annual has to close by. The special does not have to close right now. You could wait on.
Why don't we hold off on the special, just in case?
So just the annual town meeting then?
Okay, all right. So you make a motion to close the annual town warrant?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, close. Okay.
We'll have to, Dale, remember to close the special as we get.
Yeah, well, I would put that on the agenda for next week or the, the week, I think you have to close it by law within, you know, like two weeks. You've got plenty of time.
We do have plenty of time.
Yeah, and, and that's always a nice, I mean, well, the annual stuff for all of FY '17 is closed now, but if there's some intermediate stuff that comes up, somebody needs a transfer or something. It's always good to hold that open for, for a bit, a bit longer.
Okay.
All righty, so now we're up to Dale, who's leaving.
Nobody else wanted my copies.
So we're up to your report.
Well, actually, it's mostly all of the, all of the warrants that, you know, all the warrant stuff that's been going on. I mean, that's been really taking up most of the time at this, at this particular point. The articles, the ten petition articles, making sure that they were certified, and, and again, we're, we're at, seven are certified, and I don't know where the other two stand, that did just came in today. This was the last day to bring anything in, so they did. And on this, this is, this is a, it's essentially a right-of-way-for-vegetation maintenance on railroad. And since we have a piece of the railroad that goes through Plimpton, that's, that's what that is. Beyond that.
So does that need to go to anybody?
No, you just need to know it's, know what's happening. They have, they're proposing herbicide applications for 2016, on their rights-of-way on June 18th to the 17th of July, touch-up applications on 6/28 August, and brush applications in non-sensitive areas on the same. It's, it's sort of a standard thing they put out every year when they have to, when they have to clear through.
I know we've had some people come in that were concerned about that, concerned about the bees and things like that, but does that need to go to Concom or anything for a review?
You know what, I would just throw it out to Concom, just, you know, just to put them out on it. Generally, the stuff they're using now is not evil, you know, they've gotten.
Yeah, and it would be nice for the residents to know that they're going to be working back there.
Just make sure that that goes out to Concom, please?
Yeah, make sure that that goes to Conservation, which I'm sure they'll be fine with.
It does say on it where the, where you can look at the map, so could you read that aloud to somebody and let the residents know if they're interested?
Yeah, this is, it's just, it's the FDCE Railroad, it's actually FDCE, this is an email address, I mean, a web address, fdcrearroadvegetation.com. And you can go to commuter, commuter services from there, environmental monitoring notice, 2016 yearly operational plan, your municipality, which would be Plimpton, and then the rights-of-way maps. And they, they lay it all out there as to where it's going to be in the community and, and where they're going to do it. And again, generally speaking, they've, after having a lot of flack in the past, they've generally perked up about what they use and where they use it and when they use it, so. But, but you're right, it is, it's a big, I'm a beekeeper, so I know how sensitive this stuff is.
So if anybody's concerned and wants to find out if there's anything going on near your property, you can look it up. Okay, so is that it for you?
Yeah, I think that would be it for me tonight.
We're up to correspondence then.
Okay, do you make honey?
Yeah, I do, as a matter of fact.
Okay, all right.
I haven't yet. I want to, but I haven't yet. Actually, one of the best mead makers in the entire New England area is about two miles from my house.
What's mead?
I'll give you the information. Meat is wine, honey, made with wine.
Oh, really? What about whiskey?
No, they don't do that.
Okay, your bees don't make whiskey? They're not whiskey bees.
No, no. Actually, I'm in this situation now, I have the bees in the garden, and now it's time to start getting out with the rototiller, which is always fun every year, because they don't like rototillers, so it's another story.
Interesting.
But, yeah.
Story for another time.
Yeah.
All right, last week we had gotten something from the ABCC, and what it is, is they're looking for communities that are interested in participating in a pilot plan, or a pilot program that they've got. They're trying to get more of the licensing online. They've said there's been lots of mistakes that people make when they're filling out the applications, as you probably have noticed, Bree, you know, typographical stuff and like that. So they are looking for communities that are interested in participating in this pilot program. It is going to be, the testing will be done in Boston for a total of two to five days, both full and half-days during July and August. They'll publish the calendar for approximately two months in advance, so you've got time to plan. So I don't know if, you know, anybody would be interested in participating in this pilot.
So this would really be breeze, sort of a breeze drive?
Probably breeze.
Okay.
Looks like they're going to Boston.
But it's, it's completely voluntary. You don't feel like you have to do it if you're not interested. You are going to have to go into Boston, and we do have to let them know by April 15th, so.
For between two and five days. She would have to go into Boston every day.
Yes, it's going to be full and half-days during July and August. And they said they'd publish the calendar two months in advance.
So you're able to plan. And not necessarily, not consecutive days?
No, not, it doesn't give you, it doesn't say, just says two to five days, both full and half-days during July and August.
Why don't you look into it, see if it's something that would.
I'd like to commute right up there.
See if it's something that would actually.
I'll tell you what, I'll stay at your house, you can stay at my house, because I'm closer to Boston than you are.
See if it's something that would actually help.
Okay.
And if it is, then we'll look into it, and if it's not, then we'll.
Awesome.
Put it elsewhere.
Okay, so that's, that.
I don't do the commute availability.
I did have a letter in my box from Chesterton Knight, you'd like to go on record as being in full support of the proposed growth facility at 98 Ring Road in Plimpton. There are numerous reasons for the support, starting that it will, that the will and vote of the citizens of Massachusetts. The vote in 2012 made it clear that our state favors allowing the chronically ill access to the proven medical benefits of cannabis. The obvious compassionate aspect for those affected is a belief held by most everyone. The challenge comes with where to locate the facilities that are needed to fulfill these patients' needs as a right to farm community. I believe Plimpton is the perfect town to host a growth facility. The fact that the applicant, Jeff Randall, is an experienced farmer in the cranberry industry and a longtime Plimpton resident brings solid credentials to the table. As a businessman who experienced firsthand the demise of the shoe industry, I know how[1710.01] As a businessman who experienced firsthand the demise of the shoe industry, I know how incredibly important it is for those in any industry of economic challenge to look beyond at other opportunities. As a town, it is critical for us to support this effort of Mr. Randall to continue the viability of his farms as well as to expand our tax base. Some have expressed concerns regarding the butter's decline in property values. I believe this issue has been dispelled by two recent buyers on Ring Road, who have stated that proximity and pricing were unaffected in their decision-making. Our town has consistently shown a desire to expand its tax base while continuing to uphold the values of our residents. I firmly believe this project is in keeping with these principles. Mr. Randall has continued to show his willingness to work with the town, neighbors, and the residents to create an open environment of discussion and negotiation. I will encourage you to do the same. Conscely. Chesterton, Chesterton Knight. All right, we've got something that needs to be signed by the chairman, so we can hold that. It's a please item. From the Plimpton Council on Aging, from the Plimpton Animal Control Officer, there's going to be a rabies clinic for pets owned by Plimpton elderly residents. Says, "Good morning, council members. The Kingston Animal Shelter invites Plimpton senior residents to attend its annual rabies clinic on Saturday, April 16, 10:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m. The cost for a rabies vaccine is a nominal $10. Dogs must be on leash, and cats must be brought in carriers. It is my understanding that the Plimpton Council on Aging Band will be available to transport any housebound residents and their pets to the clinic if necessary. Please contact Plimpton Animal Control Officer. Frank provides his phone number, which is 781-585-9444, for any needed additional information no later than April 11, 2016." So I don't know, is this up outside already?
I will make sure they get that.
Okay, great.
And make sure that Chris Marano gets a, yeah, a physical copy so she can share that.
Awesome. Very nice. Okay. Oh, there you go. That was part of it, too, Bree. Okay. And last, the last but not least, the Plimpton Halifax Express, an article on our discussion of the Brook Retreat incident, and a nice picture of Amy Cronin. And then we've got, is there anything else in here on us? I don't think so.
Oh, no.
Okay. Oh, and then John Traynor, as candidate for selectmen, very nice picture of John. All right, so that, and that is all the correspondence.
Moving right on.
I love it. I just love it.
Jesus, Mark's low on a stone.
Dates to Remember. So the next Board of Selectments meeting is scheduled for 4/4. We can hold off until 4/11. I, Finn Cumbs will be coming in then. I did confirm with them that they can change their date as well. Is there any reason that we have to meet next week?
No, we've closed the warrant.
No.
Are you aware of anything pending that requires to meet?
No, I mean, I think you're under the wire if you close the special on the 11th, so that would probably work then. And, and again, I mean, you're always on 48-hour notice to have another meeting if you, if something comes up that you need to deal with, but I'm not thinking of anything too pressing. And this is that kind of, that kind of redip in the road after the warrant's closed and it's getting put together and all of that before we ramp up to actual town meeting.
Yeah, and we're on hold with the marijuana. We're on hold with Brook Retreat.
Right, and I don't know if I will have anything to report next week.
Right.
Okay, all right.
So we'll put it off until?
The 11th?
The 11th will be our next meeting.
Okay.
And then probably be back to every week after that. I will not be here on the 18th.
Okay. But Mark will be back on the 11th?
But he will be back, yes.
Okay.
Okay, Public Safety is meeting on this Wednesday at 6 o'clock at 3, no, not at 3:30, at 6 o'clock in this room. And we've already said Collins Group will be in on May 2nd at 5:30.
May 2nd, 5:30, in this room.
So we're up to minutes.
Did you see the Public Safety's at 5:30?
6.
6 o'clock. 6 o'clock, I'm sorry. Thank you. What, do you want to start with the 22nd of February?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Mark's name was misspelled in the second down. It says Mr. Rosso. In, right under, present, meeting call to order, third line down. Mr. Rosso?
No, I have Russo.
Really? All right, mine says Rosso.
Yeah, so did Mark's. That was a note that he sent me.
Weird. Okay, so then I have Borrego, too, which if you had that as well. I mean, the Luddy's name is misspelled.
Yeah, I think that's, okay.
And that's all I had.
And then we want to add the word Ben under solar update. The Metropoiet and Lake Street projects are pending. Mr. Plo will follow up on an email that had been rejected.
Okay.
So I move we accept the minutes of February 22nd as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Would you pass that over to Bree?
Absolutely. So you've got all the corrections on yours?
Believe so.
Okay.
Okay, then we have 3/7.
I have a few. 3/7, I don't have that one. You know what, I looked at it last week. Oh, that's right, that's the one that came late that was separate from the other one. That's right. Do you have an extra copy of it?
You want to look at mine?
Yeah, could I?
I can do another one, though. I might have another one here.
Okay. No worries.
I guess this has to get added to it.
Okay, gotcha. Your, it says you've got it with all your.
Okay, so.
Changes.
This will be the attachment to that also, and that's the attorney.
Okay. Perfect.
So there's a couple misspellings, and I felt like I could refer. Perhaps we should, I'll confirm this, because you folks are here. Is Attorney Kraus, the attorney for several of you, or just for the Doyle's?
Uh, we were the only ones who signed the fee agreement.
Okay, so that was my change. That was my understanding.
Oh, okay. I had it wrong, I think.
Well.
You're paying the bill for everybody's.
Accept the minutes as amended.
Put the cup around. Okay, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We've got two more.
21st?
Oh, 14th. I don't have the 14th.
You should have the 14th.
Do you have the 14th?
Uh-uh. I had the 21st. I had, I read it on my phone, and it looked good. I probably have the 21st, too, over 14th.
You should have the 14th.
Okay, I don't have the 14th, so let's.
Do you want to hold it then?
Hold off on the 14th.
That was last week.
No, the 21st was last week.
The 14th.
I can't believe we're this far behind. We always do one.
The 14th. You had them, and then we didn't do.
Okay.
But you should have the 14th that was sent to you last week.
I will have to look for those.
She has email gremlins.
Yeah.
Oh, I have terrible email.
Okay, all right, so let's just hold it until our next meeting.
We'll hold off on the 14th.
Abe knows. My email is hard, it just sits.
Well, hopefully, we're going to get, hopefully, we're going to get the grant that Christine and we will be on, we will have our own, everything will be in-house, our own server, our own email will be in.
Any word on that yet?
No, I haven't heard anything. I mean, I keep waiting. I haven't heard anything. I guess everybody's scat when talking about having your own personal email server these days, but I guess maybe that's another story.
All right, you know what, I might, I'll look into that.
Yeah, with the grants, I didn't ask what the grant sequence was. I would assume it probably is a little later, because they weren't talking about the actual reports coming back until, you know, later in May or June.
Okay.
So I'm assuming they might want to coincide the grant awards with that, but.
But it was Pam Coker, right?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, I'll check on that, find out the status.
And the 21st, do we want to do those, or?
Yeah, we can do those.
Because Mark was here. Okay, we'll just do them. All right, I had several punctuation issues, because that's the way I am. But. Or we can change the public's concern to residence.
I would have drank more in college if I had her.
Yeah, why don't we change it to residence?
Okay, so that's in several places.
It's terrible.
Okay.
It's either a Cory check or Cory check, so that's minimal punctuation. Yeah, punctuation, not critical. Typo there, not critical. Under solar update, we're owed $15,000 as a host fee. Dale, that reminds me, you were going to look into that.
One year.
There was some discussion about whether that was really a one-time thing, or if.
According to Mark Sylvia, it's a one-time thing, and they paid it in '14, and that was, that was the bottom line.
So that should be in some contract somewhere, shouldn't it?
Yeah, it was in the initial contract that they set, but they didn't, it doesn't really specify that it's annual or a one-time.
Because Mr. Henry was sure that it was.
Multiple years.
Every year. So can you find that contract and look into it?
Well, if I can drag Mr. Henry off his stool at Joe's Bar in St. Martin, I probably can ask him directly.
Oh, is he gone?
Oh, yeah. He's, he's gone. He's, he's hanging out on the beach watching the planes land in St. Martin.
Okay, and then on the last page, it says that we approved the executive session minutes, and we were actually approving the Board of Selectmen in the Public Safety Building Committee minutes. So that was.
Okay.
Did you do executive session minutes, then?
I did.
We did them during executive session.
I'll email you them. We, they were approved as written.
Yeah.
Okay.
I had done it following the agenda, like you were approving the submission of that. There wasn't anything on the bottom of that agenda for the, before, for the public safety. It said executive session. Okay, I'll change it.
It could be that he forgot to put it on the agenda, and I had them with me.
And when you listen to it, that's what it sounds like, and you're like, hey, what but, so I'm thinking it was.
Yeah.
You forgot the executive ones.
Yeah.
So, all right.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of March 21st as amended.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Okay. All right, and then we just have my executive session minutes from the 21st, which I emailed to both you and Mark.
Yes, and I did not have any problem with it.
Okay.
So I move we accept them as written.
Okay.
All in favor?
Second. Aye.
Oppose?
Check and check.
Okay. And I will leave the 14th on the agenda for next week.
I'll re-submit it again. And I wonder if that was the day that Mike came in. Remember, I told you Mike was here that day?
Went to fix your computer?
Yeah, or he came in to do.
Okay.
None of my emails were sent in again. They just sat in my mailbox.
All right, well, I'll look. I'll look for the 14th. So all we have is then the 14th and then today for our next meeting.
Okay, which will be on the 11th.
Okay.
And it looks like we've made it through the agenda. Is there anything that anybody would like to, you know, stand up, a little song and dance?
Can you chair every week?
So you're, yeah. You've all got next Monday off. No, have dinner with your families and enjoy.
All right, I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good night. Thank you for watching. Thank you for coming.